The April meeting of the Suffolk City Planning Commission will come to order. I will call on Commissioner Staylor for invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather here today at the Planning Commission's monthly meeting to make decisions for our city. Grant us the judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter placed before us to act in accordance with what is in the best interest for our community and fellow citizens. We ask that you provide safety for our protectors, the police and safety professionals, our military, both at home and abroad. Amen.
I will ask our Assistant Director of Planning, Bob Gumas, to call the robe.
Chairman Benton?
Present.
Commissioner Creakmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Present.
Commissioner Hicks? Commissioner Richter?
Here.
Commissioner Singleton?
Here.
Commissioner Staylor?
Here.
Have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before, at this time, are there any corrections to the minutes of the March meeting? If there are no corrections to the minutes of the March meeting, they'll stand approved as presented. Before we proceed with public hearings, a couple of comments that I will make. Mr. Hanley, our Director of Planning, has retired. Mr. Gumas, Bob Gumas, is serving as Acting Director at this time. Also, our City Attorney, Helava Holland, has become a judge. And William Hudgens Jr. is serving as interim City Attorney at this time. So we're having some changes in names and faces that are serving in this interim period of personnel transition. Public hearings. Public hearings are 30 minutes in length. 10 minutes for proponents, 15 minutes for opponents, 5 minutes for rebuttal by proponents. Public hearings are videotaped and made available for public viewing. Our first public hearing this afternoon is rezoning request. Let me put on my glasses so I can read it correctly. RZN 2021-004, conditional Hampton Roads Crossing Park 216 Apartments Phase 3. Mr. Gumas, if you will present the caption, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning request, RZN 2021-004, conditional Hampton Roads Crossing Park 216 Apartments Phase 3, submitted by John H. Peterson III, Terry Peterson Residential 30 LLC and Terry Peterson Investment 30 LLC applicant and property owner in accordance with Sections 31, 304, and 31, 305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved proffered conditions for property located at 1,000 and 1,010 University Boulevard. Zoning map 13G, Parcels 2 and 2 asterisk 3. The purpose of this request is to amend the previously accepted proffers pertaining to the development of Hampton Roads Crossing Mixed-Use Development, RZ01-06, as amended conditional. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough Zoned MUD Mixed-Use Development Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed-Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2021-004, conditional. Mr. Chairman?
Before we begin this process, I need to turn to Ms. Brazil. Is there anyone out in the foyer who would like to be inside for this public hearing?
Let me check for the first one, but we do have people out there of the different various items. One second.
While she is checking on that, I'm going to invite Staff Planner, Ms. Baker, to come to the podium, but to perhaps hesitate to make certain that there's no one outside that would like to participate in this.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of Planning Commission. The conditional rezoning request is to amend existing proffers for Hampton Roads Crossing to allow for an additional 104 age-restricted rental apartments. The subject property is located in the Northern Growth Area Mixed-Use Core Use District of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and is part of the Nansman Voting Borough. The Mixed-Use Core allows for a mix of non-residential uses in 25 to 40 dwelling units per acre. The subject area is in the Mixed-Use Development Overlay District, also known as MUD. To the north of the subject property is MUD, which includes a grocery store and condominiums. To the south also is MUD, and there's apartments. East, MUD University Research Center. And west, B2, which includes multifamily, also known as College Square Apartments. Here's a brief history of the conditional rezonings in Hampton Roads Crossing. In 2006, Hampton Roads Crossing received a conditional rezoning to a mixed-use development overlay district. This rezoning included 600 residential units with school proffers and areas for office and retail. At this time, the 40-acre-plus area was known as the corporate campus, which included the subject property. In 2012, a second conditional rezoning allowed for increase in the number of residential units from 600 to 1,000. The corporate campus also became an extension of the mixed-use district. At this time, the additional 400 units were deferred until adequate capacity was found for the elementary and middle schools. Then in 2014, a conditional rezoning amended the deferment of the additional 400 units and instead added a school proffer. Finally, 2018, a conditional rezoning again amended the school proffer. At the time, 266 units remained and became subject to a different school proffer. In November 2020, the last certificate of occupancy was approved for the remaining 266 units. So at that time, all 1,000 dwelling units had been built per the existing number of proffered units. Additional 104 age-restricted units will be on Parcel 13G*2 and 13G*2*3. The applicant has stated that the subject property is the last remaining parcels in the MUD. Attempts have been made for several years to market this property for office and retail. Despite its prime location near College Drive, in close proximity to the Kroger Marketplace Grocery Store, and several restaurants, retail, and offices, these attempts have not been successful. Additionally, the site was found too small due to several easements making hospitality uses such as hotels and motels unfeasible. This site plan was purposely flipped to show the property north to south. The 104 age-restricted dwelling units will be known as Park 216 Phase 3. While Hampton Roads Crossing offers residential options ranging from single-family detached to high-end residential apartments, the applicant has noted that there is not housing opportunities specifically for people age 55 and over within the development. The applicant also stated that there is a significant demand for luxury apartments marketed to older adults. To meet this demand, the applicant is proposing these 104 age-restricted apartments to be leased to tenants over 55 years old with no children under 18 years living with them. The community will consist of two separate buildings on either side of Beranger Road. Private amenities will be provided for residents, which may include meeting rooms, package delivery room, and common areas inside and outside of the building structure. Residents of the proposed Park 216 Phase 3 may also use amenities such as the clubhouse, pool, and other outdoor areas built for Park 216 Phase 1 residents. Again, I reoriented this conceptual master plan north to south. The area where the rental units are proposed moved a little bit, but our subject circled, but it's a little bit down further below University Boulevard. So these are subject to the rezoning request. Staff evaluated this conditional rezoning under the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. This conditional rezoning request fulfills several policies in Chapter 2, Land Use and Growth Management, including keeping development focused in a designated growth area, assuring predictable and orderly development, promoting a balance of residential and non-residential land uses, and promoting compatibility in land use patterns. Furthermore, the conditional rezoning fulfills Policy 4-1 in the Transportation Chapter to provide opportunities for residents to adopt a lifestyle that is less dependent on auto travel, and in Chapter 6, Housing, Policy 6-1, to encourage development of a balanced and diverse housing stock. Under the adequate public facilities policy of the UDO, this conditional rezoning request meets stormwater and public water and sanitary sewer requirements. As for the transportation requirements, originally, two hotels with 460 rooms were proposed for the subject property. An updated memo from the applicant shows that trip generation will be significantly reduced by the proposed age-restricted dwelling units versus the hotels. Finally, schools will not be affected by this conditional rezoning as the applicant has proffered to restrict the 104 rental apartments to tenants 55 years and older with no children under 18 years old living with them. And here are the proffers. As mentioned, the conditional rezoning request would amend the most recent approved proffer conditions for Hampton Roads Crossing. That would be RZN 2018-008, which was Ordinance Number 18-0-113. In particular, this rezoning request proposes updates to proffer 7, 10, 11, and 14, and adds proffer 15 as follows. Proffers 7, 11, and 14 clarify that school proffers do not apply to the 104 dwelling units. Proffer 10, proffer number 10, amends the number of constructed residential units from 1,000 to 1,104. Proffer 15 is added to restrict the leasing of the 104 rental apartments to tenants 55 years and older with no children under 18 years of age living at the residence. Based on this review, staff finds that this conditional rezoning request is consistent with the principles of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. In addition, adequate public facilities have been addressed with this proposed rezoning, and staff recommends approval of this conditional rezoning application with the submitted proffered conditions. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon, Chairman Benton, Vice Chairman Singleton, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tuck Bowie. I'm with Terry Peterson Residential 30 LLC and Terry Peterson Investment LLC, who's the applicant for this rezoning application. I was going to make a somewhat detailed presentation, but Ms. Baker did such a good job that I don't want to bore you with detail she's already submitted to you. But let me, let me just touch on a few high points. As Ms. Baker mentioned, Hampton Roads Crossing was the first MUD that was approved in the City of Suffolk. It was approved back in 2006. We're now at 2021, 15 years in the making. Part of that is because of the housing recession that we went through. So in the last 15 years, as again Ms. Baker mentioned, we've come back to this commission and City Council and asked for some amendments to our original rezoning. And again, I hate to keep using the word rezoning because the zoning is MUD. We're not changing the underlying zoning. We're making amendments to the original MUD and some of the proffers that we've made. But we've come back over the last 15 years to make a number of changes to meet the demands of the changing market. As also mentioned, the parcel that we're looking at today is the last remaining parcel in Hampton Roads Crossing. For two years, we have tried to market this property to a number of different users, commercial users, retail users. We even looked at doing a combination retail and with units over top of the retail. And unfortunately, with the pandemic we're going through, with the impacts that that's had on the office market and the retail market, and with all the other retail and office that we have out there, we couldn't find a user. So we went back to the market, did a market study, and the market study came back with some interesting information. It, it showed us that while we have a diversity of residential types of units out there, both for sale and rental, what the market was missing was a rental for 55 and older. And I certainly qualify for that. They're the type of people that don't want to own a home, they don't want to have any maintenance. If they want to go away, they, they don't have any children. If they want to go away, they want to lock the door and just walk away and not have to worry about it. So what this request today is for 104 units for age-restricted 55 and older with no children under the age of 18 living in those units. It will become part of our Park 216 portfolio. We've done that in three phases. The first phase, and the reason it's called Park 216, is we started with 216 units, then added an additional 50, which are the units we just finished that, that are at the roundabout that front on University Boulevard. And just so you know, all 266 units are leased. We have a waiting list for people who want to get in there. And then these, these additional 104 units will be on both sides of Beranger, which is the access to our main Park 216 Phase 1. They'll provide amenities separate from what Park 216 Phase 1 have, but the, these, these residents will also be able to use the amenities that are in Park 216 Phase 1. This application comes before you with recommendation of approval from staff, and my hope is that you'll agree without approval, and you'll move this forward to City Council with your vote of confidence and approval, and I'll stand by or answer any questions that you have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bowie, is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? If not, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My, my statement in kind is not in opposition to the project because obviously we're at the end of the project, and it's, it's again not in opposition. But what I have found and what we're trying to calculate, sir, is 104 units.
Excuse me, can I get you to give?
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry. Kelly Hengler, 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia. Thank you very much, sir. May I proceed? Thank you, sir. So this is calculated at 104 units, and I just simply wanted it to be on the record here before City Planning because we have taken note of a lot of congestion and impact across Suffolk. And in the Comprehensive Plan, it did state 522 residential units per year in the Comprehensive Plan. So I'd like to just have a thought before the Planning Commission as this 104 plus whatever additional has, you know, added to the traffic, the trip traffic on that road that we'd be able to give consideration because we can't find anything in regards to the 55 and older legislatively or statutorily that even though in kind, we do need to have that 55 and older. Again, not in opposition, but there's nothing actually that we can find legislatively in the Commonwealth of Virginia that holds to 55 and older. That may be the original economic resource here for these units, but it may at a later time have an impact. So we just wanted to leave those comments before esteemed Planning Commission here on what future impacts that may be once these homes have turned over five years, 10 years, you know, residential units, to be included into consideration in the area because we are having impacts to our schools, we are having impacts to our roads, just for future focus as a note. So I thank you for your time, and that is all. Once again, not in opposition, but a footnote of consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that speaker was not in opposition, but for consideration. At this time, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, Mr. Bowie, would you like to make any additional comments on behalf of your application? If there is no one who makes, who wishes to make any additional comments on behalf of this application, we will close the public hearing. I turn to the Commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Chairman, I have a motion. I'd like to move that we approve RZN 2021-004 with the submitted proffered conditions.
Motion for approval from Board Member Hicks. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Board Member Creakmore. Motion and second for approval. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Gumas, call the vote, please.
Chairman Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Richter?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor?
Yes.
Vote passes by a vote of eight to zero, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations, and this will go to City Council on May 19 with a recommendation for approval. Our next public hearing this af, this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-002, Suffolk News Herald Mixed-Use Multifamily Apartments. At this time, I recognize Mr. Gumas.
Conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-002, Suffolk News Herald Mixed-Use Multifamily Apartments, submitted by Chris Johnson, Monument Development 16 LLC applicant on behalf of Steve Stewart, Suffolk Publications LLC property owner in accordance with Sections 31, 306, and 31, 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a mixed-use dwelling multifamily apartment building on property located at 130 South Saratoga Street, zoning map 34G18 parentheses 2, Parcel 5. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough Zone CBD, Central Business District Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Mixed-Use Core Use District. And Alexis Baker will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. But before I invite her to the stage, Ms. Brazil, is there anyone outside who would like to be in the chambers for this presentation?
There is no one in the lobby for this request.
All right, thank you for that. At this time, I recognize Ms. Baker, Staff Planner.
CUP 2021-002 is a conditional use permit to establish a multifamily and apartment building not otherwise enumerated, located at 130 South Saratoga Street. The subject property is also known as the Suffolk News Herald. The property under consideration is located in the Central Growth Area Mixed-Use Core Use District and is part of the Suffolk Voting Borough. The subject property is located in the Central Business District Zoning District. It is surrounded by parking lots, office, retail, and mixed-use and multifamily development. The proposed use is an adapted, adapted reuse of an existing 11,140 square-foot office building to create a multifamily apartment building with a lobby and commercial use on the first floor. In total, the multifamily apartment building will contain 14 multifamily dwelling units with 434 square feet of commercial space and 434 square feet for a lobby. Eight of the dwelling units will be 584 square feet. The remaining dwelling units will range in size from 774 square feet up to 1,055 square feet. This is the first floor. Here is what the second floor will look like. And here is the third floor. Here is a view of the building from South Saratoga Street. The conditional use permit request was evaluated under the Unified Development Ordinance, the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and related studies such as the Suffolk Downtown Master Plan. First of all, a conditional use permit must be obtained for a dwelling multifamily and apartment building not otherwise enumerated under the UDO. In the Central Business District, mixed-use dwellings are permitted by right. However, by definition, to be considered a mixed-use building, a dwelling must be located above the ground floor of an institutional, civic, office, commercial, or retail use. While the applicant is proposing a limited amount of commercial space on the first floor of the building, a majority of the multifamily dwelling units will not be located above a civic, office, commercial, or retail use. Therefore, this proposed use must be considered a multifamily or apartment building not otherwise enumerated and must obtain a conditional use permit. City water and sewer are available to this building. Water, fire, and sanitary sewer demands will be evaluated during site plan review process. A water model will need to be obtained from public utilities. Additionally, a sewer pump station analysis will need to be done to determine whether capacity exists in the sanitary sewer system. Public utilities otherwise had no objections to this request. Additionally, this conditional use request was evaluated by Traffic Engineering, who also had no objections. Next, there are parking and open space requirements that must be met under the UDO. Parking requirements can be fulfilled if a parking facility is within 200 feet of the property, and all parking demands can be met at any one time. A written agreement between the owners of the parking facilities and the building will be necessary. It is estimated that approximately 20 spaces are required based on 14 apartments and 434 square feet of commercial space. This requirement can be met by public parking facilities located to the south and east of the property. Open spaces also required per the UDO at a minimum of 200 square feet per multifamily dwelling. The applicant was unable to meet this requirement. Therefore, the applicant appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeal for a variance to this requirement. The applicant was granted the variance on April 13th and was granted relief from these requirements of the UDO. The subject property is also within the Historic Conservation Overlay District and must adhere to the provisions of the UDO and Suffolk Historic Design Guidelines. Design Guidelines advocates the reuse of underutilized buildings. A reuse of this building protects it from becoming blighted or vacant, preserving the historic character of the downtown area. Any exterior modifications, as seen from the public right of way, must obtain a certificate of appropriateness. Furthermore, the conditional use permit request adheres to the goals of the Suffolk Downtown Master Plan to revitalize downtown Suffolk. The Master Plan in particular encourages opportunities to repurpose and refill existing buildings with residential projects in the downtown core. Existing buildings repurposed for residential uses has helped to create additional demand for goods, services, and food in the downtown. The adapted reuse of the subject property within the downtown core will increase pedestrian traffic and encourage new businesses in the Central Business District, satisfying several goals of the Suffolk Downtown Master Plan. Finally, the proposed use fulfills the UDO's conditional use permit approval criteria and fulfills specific policies of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, such as promoting a balance of residential and non-residential uses, encouraging a balanced, balanced and diverse housing stock, encouraging infill housing in the mixed-use and core support districts, and preserving the city's historic resources. It is staff's opinion that the site in question is appropriate for the proposed use, given the existing and future infrastructure for, for the proposed use and its location, nor will the use adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-002, with conditions presented in staff's report. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners. My name is David Dahlman with Kimley Horn, address is 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach, Virginia. Here on behalf of Monument Development 16 LLC and the owner, Chris Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Baker, for the, uh, the presentation. I won't go into any specific details, but am available for any questions, along with the owners here, available for any questions that you may have regarding the application. We look forward to working with the, the city to, um, to, for a successful project. So with that, I'll, I'll run the rest of my time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, would you like to make any additional comments on behalf of your application? We will now close the public hearing. I turn to the Planning Commission for questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman. I just have a, a parking question of Ms. Baker, is it Baker? Sixteen, sixteen apartments, and you deem they only needed 20 parking spaces?
Fourteen.
Well, fourteen apartments, fourteen apartments, and they only need 20 parking spaces. And that includes the commercial needs on the first floor. I guess I'm just very, I'm, I'm a little con- concerned about the parking. When you just showed me that aerial view, I saw 30 spaces. And, uh, that were open. And so I'm just a little confused about how 16 spots, I mean, 16, how, I mean, 14 housing spots would only need 20 spaces, and what happens if, what time of the day was that? And if that lot is not needed, then was it there for? I mean, I'm, I'm just, uh, the parking issue was a little telling for me.
They, they would still be required to get a letter from the city that allows them to have the parking before they can even, you know, begin, um, begin their site, have their site plan approved.
Well, there's no time of the day when this, when the parking becomes an issue right now, I guess. I hate to see them running around.
I can't, I can't really speak to what time of the day that that was taken. I also am not sure how many employees were employed by the Suffolk Herald building. But, um, the way that I looked at calculating the parking was one, of course, one parking space per unit, and that was the minimum, the, the requirement. And then I looked at the commercial area as, um, like a potential, like, restaurant, which was one parking space per 75 square foot. So I just kind of looked at it as the highest amount of parking needed for the commercial aspect.
Yeah, Commissioner Hicks, if I, if I could add a couple of comments. Of course, this is recognizing it's a, an adaptive reuse in our Central Business District downtown area. Part of the, the concept that, that we've worked through over the years is that when some of these adaptive reuses come in with residential uses, that there's going to be a sharing of the parking spaces that are available. The nighttime users, the residents will be there and arrive and use the spaces. In the evening hours, for the most part, they'll very often leave and go to work making the spaces available for the commercial users, if, if you will. So that's been one of the strategies. And then, and finally, I, I would add also, um, we have, there, there is an available abundance of parking in this lot to serve this thing. And, and I would contend, um, it would be a good thing for downtown to almost have a parking problem if we had that much activity in businesses and, and we could move forward. That, that, that'd be one measure of success.
Thank you.
Just a minute, Ms. Baker. We've had the public hearing. While Ms. Baker is at the podium, are there any other questions from commissioners to Ms. Baker? Thank you, Ms. Baker. Again, we've had the public hearing, and I'm turning to the Planning Commission for questions, comments, or motion.
I'd like to have a question for the gentleman from Monument.
The applicant will come to the podium, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm trying to determine, uh, there's 14 apartments. Apartment 14, 13 and 14 will start on the second floor and go to the third floor, is that, is that, uh?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It's, the building is shorter in the front, and then it gets taller where there is a mezzanine in the back.
Okay, and nine and 10 will be on the ground floor with the loft on the second floor?
What's that? Yeah, so there'll be, there'll be one unit with a loft on the first floor.
Say that again, please.
The majority of the units on the first floor are single-story. And then there's one that has a loft that goes upstairs, that's interior just to that unit.
Okay. This is the ground floor, and, uh, nine and 10, which would be coming off the rear, they have, uh, a loft to the second floor.
Yes. Yes, they have a loft that goes up to the second floor. But it's, it's just interior to that unit. So there's not like a second-story hallway.
I guess my question is, I'll, I'll rephrase the question for you. Apartment 14, 13 and 14 originate on the second floor, not the ground floor.
Yes, that's correct. You walk up the stairwell, and then you go into the unit, and then.
So there, the 13, 13 and 14, the entrance to those apartment is on the second floor, and then there's a loft for those apartments on the third floor?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just a minute. While you're at the podium, let's see if any other commissioner has a question. Again, commissioners, while the applicant is at the podium, any other questions to the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Back to commissioners. We've had the public hearing. Questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for CUP 2021-002 with, uh, how many conditions is it? Seven conditions.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Singleton.
Second.
Second, uh, from Commissioner Staler, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Staler. Motion and second for approval. Discussion of the motion. Motion is for approval. Mr. Gumas, call the roll, please.
Chairman Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Richter?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations, and this will go to City Council on May 19 with a recommendation for approval. Our next public hearing this afternoon is conditional use permit request CUP 2021-003, Whitney 1 slash 2 Solar Facility. At this time, I recognize Mr. Gumas.
Conditional use permit request CUP 2021-003, Whitney 1 and 2 Solar Facility, submitted by Piero Metellus, P.E., Century Engineering Incorporated, agent, on behalf of Michael Doniger, Vice President, Chaperton Solar Whitney LLC applicant, on behalf of Adam Roundtree and Brandon Simpson, property owners, in accordance with Section 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located at the southeast quadrant of the intersection between Great Fork Road and Lucy Cross Road, zoning map 64, parcel 58B. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zone A Agricultural Use District, or, excuse me, Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designate this as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. A resolution, when you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request CUP 2021-003. And Kevin Wine will be the staff planner presenting today.
Thank you, but before I recognize Mr. Wine, Ms. Brazil, is there anyone else that needs to come in the chambers for the public hearing?
Uh, yes, we have quite a few people in the lobby for this request.
There are quite a few people in the lobby. Do we have seating arrangements for them to be in here to hear the presentation?
Not in here, all of the marked seats are already taken.
Right now, of those in here, after Mr. Wine gives his presentation, are there any out there who wish to speak?
Yes. We have a few people in the lobby that wish to speak.
Is there room in here to accommodate those who wish to speak?
We, we are going to rotate them through as we get, so that we're not over the capacity of chambers.
Okay, all right, so that we can have a clue, how many speakers do you, how many people do you have that would like to speak at this public hearing?
Hang on one second. We're going to move people in now that staff is.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify also, um, while we have accommodations in, in the lobby for folks, the, the presentation is being amplified so they can hear the public comments and staff reports.
Thank you, I recognize that, but I want to get a handle, and I think the Planning Commissioners do, as to how many participants potentially we have for the public hearing. That's my focus right now. Ms. Brazil?
She's making one last.
Everyone's in here who would like to speak for that.
All right, is everyone in here who anticipates that they'd like to participate in speaking at this public hearing? That's a yes, okay? All right, thank you. At this time, Mr. Wine?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yeah, hold up, pardon.
One thing you asked was how many were here. I would like to know personally if there are additional people that are here on this case that are not in the chamber.
Ms. Brazil?
There's more people in the lobby, but they will not be speaking for this request.
How many would that be?
We have a total of four people.
Is it possible, is it possible that we can make provision for them to be in this chamber, uh, so that they can be present inside for this public hearing?
All of the, the seats are spaced out in accordance with the guidance.
I understand, I understand. All right, so we have all in here that we can accommodate, is that correct?
We can get three more.
If we can get three more, I would encourage that we bring those in.
Everyone's in.
You're confirming that everyone who wishes to participate in this public hearing are in the chambers at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that, and thank you for making this possible. All right, Mr. Wine, at this time, I recognize you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. As Mr. Gumas stated, we've received a request for a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located on Lucy Cross Road, near its intersection with Great Fork Road. The property is Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District and is designated as a part of the Rural Agricultural Use District within the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of one 2-megawatt facility and one 1-megawatt facility, for a total of 3 megawatts, on the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Lucy Cross Road and Great Fork Roads. The property consists of one parcel, which is bisected from east to west by Lucy Cross Road. The larger portion of the property is located to the north of Lucy Cross Road and consists of approximately 84 acres. The portion of the tract, um, this portion of the tract will not be utilized for the proposed use. However, south, the southern portion of the tract consists of approximately 24 acres and is proposed to be utilized for an approximately 15-acre unmanned solar array, uh, system. The project will consist of ground-mounted solar arrays that will utilize photovoltaic solar modules. The proposed solar array will consist of a single-axis tracker racking system placed on driven piles. The proposal calls for arrays that will be a maximum of 10 feet in height, and plans also call for a 7-foot-tall chain-link fence and a 50-foot-wide vegetated buffer adjacent to the existing residential lots to the west, and a 25-foot landscape buffer to the north at Lucy Cross Road. Existing vegetation will be preserved at the eastern and southern property lines to meet landscaping requirements as outlined within the UDO. One point of ingress egress is proposed, and this will be located on Lucy Cross Road. Here we have the submitted master plan, which depicts the approximately 15-acre footprint of the solar energy facility on the southern 24-acre tract of the approximately 108-acre parcel. As with all CUPs, staff has carefully reviewed the application against the conditional use permit approval criteria in Section 31306(c) of the Unified Development Ordinance and the supplemental use standards for solar energy facilities located in Section 31724. The most pertinent considerations include the following. The first one, the proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. The proposal, as submitted or modified, shall have no more adverse effects or health, uh, on health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in or driving through the neighborhood, or shall be no more injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would any, um, than would any other use generally permitted in the same district. In making such a determination, consideration should be given to the location, type, height of buildings or structures, the type and extent of landscaping and screening on the site, and whether the proposed use is consistent with any theme, action, policy of the comprehensive land which encourages mixed uses or densities. The general character of this area is agricultural, with sparse residential uses. The village of Whaleyville is located less than 600 linear feet from the proposed site at its closest point. The applicant will be required to observe a 50-foot setback between the use and all property lines and a 15-foot or 50-foot landscape buffer between the solar facility and the adjacent uses through the installation of screening and landscaping in accordance with Section 31603 and 31724. The submitted conceptual site plan depicts a developed site that appears to meet these requirements. requirements. Additionally, adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic hazards and to minimize traffic congestion on public roads. As previously mentioned, the proposed, the project proposes to establish a new point of ingress egress to the site on its frontage at Lucy Cross Road, which is classified as a local road. The construction of a commercial entrance of at least fifty feet in depth will be required and is outlined on the conceptual site plan. As noted, it has been determined that acceptable levels of service should be maintained throughout construction of the proposed solar farm with minimal traffic generated by the project once under normal operation. Traffic engineering does note that the haul route for trucks delivering materials to the site during the time of construction shall be from Whaleyville Boulevard Route thirteen via Great Fork Road to Lucy Cross Road only. This is a recommended condition of approval. Lastly, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The proposed use is not anticipated to create any noxious or offensive odor, dust, smoke, or gas, and these facilities utilize, they do utilize solar energy inverter stations which are anticipated to generate noise and vibrations at levels reasonably expected by commercial air conditioning units or running refrigerator. All noises generated by the use must be contained to the premises in accordance with Article Six of the Unified Development Ordinance. Here we have the, the same master plan you just saw with the proposed landscaping being colorized. The proposed vegetation will primarily consist of vegetation being retained along the eastern and southern boundary lines with vegetated screening being provided along the western and northern boundaries, as, as I've noted. As I mentioned, there are supplemental use standards for solar energy facilities that the use must comply with. There are ten in total, and the applicant has demonstrated through their submittal that they will meet these requirements or that they possess the ability to meet these requirements. Compliance with all standards will be thoroughly evaluated at the time of site plan. As a part of the supplemental use standards associated with the proposed use, a decommissioning plan was provided by the applicant. The submitted plan sufficiently demonstrates that the provisions outlined within the UDO can be met and will be required at the time of development plan review. Specifically, a performatory in a form approved by the city attorney and in an amount approved by the director shall be submitted by the applicant prior to development plan approval. In closing, the development of the solar energy facility would have minimal impacts on the surrounding area. The project will have to comply with the development standards of the Unified Development Ordinance, including the supplemental use standards for solar energy facilities as stipulated in section thirty-one, seven twenty-four. Additionally, the installation of landscaping will be required in accordance with thirty-one, six oh three F and thirty-one, four twelve G of the UDO. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit request, CUP twenty-twenty-one zero zero three, with the conditions noted in staff's report. Chairman, that concludes my presentation at the conclusion of the public hearing. I will be available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. At this time, we will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Chairman Commissioners, my name is Martin Speroni. I'm an attorney practicing with Saunders and Ojeda at seven oh five West Washington Street, just down the road. I represent the applicant. That's Chaberton Solar Whitney LLC, represented here by Mike Doniger, their vice president, and working together with the engineering firm where Ms. Jennifer Anderson works. Thank you, Mr. Wine. The presentation was exactly what I hoped it would be. I may repeat some of the things you said, for that I apologize. Of this entire use, there's only fifteen acres that are being requested. They are bordered to the east by agricultural and village center zoning. The south, north, and west have agricultural zoned land. There will be a seven-foot chain-link fence which will be behind the vegetative border so that it will not be visible once the vegetation is in place. The vegetation, as you can see in this map, will have a fifty-foot buffer with the residences to the west and twenty-five-foot buffer on the, on the road to the north that'd be in the local road. It's going to be an unmanned facility, and in preparation for this application, we have listened carefully to what this board, this, this body has given us feedback on prior solar sites. Specifically, this site is not going to be viewable from any main artery coming in or out of Suffolk. Furthermore, it should not be viewable from any residence nor the local road that borders The vegetative buffer is not just a bunch of plants. It's, in fact, it's a well-thought set of three or four levels of perennial plants and ground cover that would be as much as possible native to Virginia. Sound was also a concern. This site will not have a central inverter. It will have twenty-four string inverters throughout the site, each of which will make a sound similar to a household refrigerator when one is near. The tracking motors turn periodically, every so often, and the, and by a small amount, change the pitch. It would, it should not be here, it could not, it should not be heard outside of the chain-link fence. The ground cover will be native, pollinator-friendly grasses that in the summer would have to be mowed about once a month, give or take. There is a detailed decommissioning plan that is going to be put in place so that at the end of the useful life, this can be returned to the use it was before it is now. We held, we invited people to a community meeting, but whether it is because of COVID or God knows why, we did not have any people show up at the meeting. With that, I thank the board, I thank the commissioners and chairman for your attention.
Mr. Scoloni, is there someone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
My name is Jennifer Anderson. I'm with Century Engineering. I'm the site civil engineer for the Whitney, Whitney Project that we're looking at right now. A lot of the site's civil efforts have been covered, but I just wanted to reiterate specifically with the landscape buffering that it will include a combination of shrubs, shade trees, ornamental trees, and specifically evergreens. So, in the winter months, you're not going to lose tree, lose leaves and still, there will still be a full vegetated buffer surrounding the site. Just wanted to also reiterate that post-construction, we're not going to have any, you know, or very minimal additional traffic volume to the site. We're, it's an unmanned, it's an unmanned facility, so we're talking maybe one trip a month for maintenance purposes only. I think everything else was mostly covered, so that's just a couple of things I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
My name is Michael Doniger, Vice President at Chaberton Energy. I just want to, again, thank you for hearing this application this afternoon and note that we have some of the neighbors here this, this afternoon and very interested in hearing their comments. In addition to the community meeting that we tried to host last week, as Mr. Speroni mentioned, my partners and I also did some canvassing of the neighborhood, knocking on, on some of the doors and speaking with, with many of the neighbors. I believe that this may be the first time some of them are seeing the vegetative buffer and the landscaping, so I just wanted to call that out again, that we are looking to be very good neighbors to, in, in the neighborhood from the aspect of implementing the landscaping that you do see, as well as the noise considerations from previous projects implementing those best practices, as Mr. Speroni mentioned, such that there would be no noise being heard outside of the, the fence line. And also implementing the pollinator seed mix, the native seed mixes, which help us be good neighbors in increasing the agricultural effectiveness of surrounding properties. So, with that, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? There is no one else who would like to speak on behalf of this, of this application. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Come forward, please, one at a time.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruth Lazon. I live at two forty-five Great Fork Road, and this solar farm, if approved, would be adjacent to my backyard and that of my neighbors. There are several specific concerns that I have that I would like to address, but frankly, they all stem from one big concern. This is just too close to homes. Normally, when you see solar farms, they're out in these farmlands where there's no other homes around, and that's not the case here. Fifty feet is not very far. They talked something about, at one time, putting in some trees, and when I asked them then about what size trees or how tall of trees would they put in, I was told, well, they can't be too high because they're going to block out the sun. So, if they can't block out the sun, then they're not doing too much to block out the impact of the farm. But my specific concerns, first the noise level. I know they've mentioned that there is, there's a buzz or a hum that comes, that's emitted from these solar farms. It's going to be heard at night. It's quiet out there in the country. It's going to be heard. The other concern is reflection. These solar panels follow the sun, and there are certain times of the day, they even call it glint and glare conditions. It's going to come and reflect on your homes. Can you imagine in July and August being in your backyard at the wrong time of day and having this reflection coming down on you? Going to be a disruption of wildlife. That's why most of us have moved to the country, and that's why we live there, because we love to see the wildlife back in there. But the other big concern is the loss of property values. Some of these homes, including mine, were built about four years ago, and that's when I moved in there. I never would have moved there if there had been a solar farm. And my guess is, most people feel that way. Most people would not want to move there right now if there's a solar farm out there. And not too many people want to go out their back door and go into their backyards during the summer and face-to-face with a solar farm. So, just appreciate your taking all of this into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker in opposition?
Hi, my name is Jessica Yanni. I live at two fifty-five Great Fork Road. As far as the community meeting that was held, we received the letter two days before the meeting, which does not give us very long time to find sitters and take off work, which is why most of us did not come. As far as the greenery that keeps, that they keep saying that they're going to be put around the fences and stuff, if you've seen the solar farms out on four sixty, which I'm sure all of you have, it looks terrible. Most of the trees are dead. There is no flowers, nothing. The same greenery I have planted in my yard that we planted four years ago, which maybe has grown three inches probably in the last four years. So, we will definitely see the chain-link fence from our backyard. Fifty feet from our property line is not very far. I have children that play out back, but our swing set is pretty much at the edge of our property line. I don't want them playing fifty feet from a solar farm, even if there is a seven-foot-high chain-link fence. It's dangerous, not to mention that, like my neighbor said, when we built our houses four years ago, had we have known that there was going to be a solar farm, we would have never chose that lot. The builder, our builder, purchased the land from the farmer. Had they known that they were going to do the solar farm, they shouldn't have put the houses there. We would have never, ever chose to build our house there. We enjoy watching the wildlife. As far as sound, we will definitely hear whatever humming, buzzing. When our air conditioners kick on at night, you can hear them echoing through the woods. You can hear dogs barking on the other side of the woods. So, we will definitely hear the humming, buzzing, whatever sound does come from a solar farm. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good af, sorry. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for hearing us. My name's Karen Salaz. I live at three two five Lucy Cross Road. I have a list of topics here, but I'll be very brief as possible, so I'll just kind of go through them and let me know if you have any questions. I'm concerned about the habitat degradation, both animal, wildlife, and foliage in the area, and how this farm is going to affect that between, it's encroaching upon the limited space for your wildlife in that area. Deer, bear, turkey, where, what's going to happen to those? I know it's only a fifteen-acre parcel, but we watch them. They're out there. It's one of the nice things about living out there. And the other habitat degradation, not habitat, but the runoff from the storm drains right now, that's, that's a farm field, and around it is the foliage. But once they put those panels in there, we already have issues with storm drain runoff. It's a very low-lying area. How is those, how is that going to change the way the groundwater is absorbed or not absorbed? I'm concerned about that. We get flooding on Lucy Cross constantly, just the way it is. I'm wondering how that's going to change. The impact on the property values, I don't know. I'm not an expert on this, but I'm not thinking it's a positive impact on property values. I'm worried about the electromagnetic radiation from these. It's, it's, it's undetermined, but there can't be zero. And with the homes that live right adjacent to this property, that might be a concern, especially for children. The waste material, these panels, when they are removed and replaced for maintenance, there's harmful heavy metals that are in them. So, what happens with that waste material? And what happens with the stormwater runoff that's draining off of these panels? How, where is that, how is that affecting the stormwater draining in the environment, in our environment? Aesthetically, it's not a good impact aesthetically on the area. I've learned that on these sites that are not manned, they use closed-circuit TVs. I don't, not interested in closed-circuit TVs in my backyard, and they electrify the fences, from what I've been told, from what I've learned. And again, there's small children that play in the area. How is an electric fence going to impact both the wildlife that run, that used to run through that area, and the children that play close by? The construction project, based on other examples of other solar farms, it's a, it's a seven AM to seven PM construction project. It's noisy for six months. That's, that's a lot to, to put up with. What is the traffic disruption going to be like? They did say that there would be minimal impact after it's installed, but what is the traffic in the haul route? How, the hauling route? The hauling route is going to be right up Lucy Cross Road. How is that going to impact the traffic? And the condition of the road? It's a one-lane gravel road. Okay? You've got a lot of traffic going up and down there with dumpsters and the big hauling trucks that they have to be able to move this equipment in there. It's a one-lane gravel road. I've heard also that the heat from these solar panels, there are instances where birds get, they fly a little bit too low, and their wings are singed off, feathers are singed off, wings are singed off. That's not healthy. There's something called a heat island that can be created, and it was a survey done in 2016, University of Maryland, and the solar farm produces the same amount of heat as your urban downtown areas produce. There is no heat coming off the ground right now, in the woods and off the farm field, and even off the backyards that are right there. There's no heat generated off that. But the heat that's generated from a solar farm is equivalent to the same heat in the same area that comes off of an urban downtown area, with the concrete and the buildings and the glass and all that. We don't need any extra heat. Also, who, most, not most importantly, but very importantly, who does it benefit? What is the benefit to the borough of Waylville, to this community of Waylville? We haven't heard any benefit to our neighbors, our downtown area. Who's benefiting from this? And if it's not the district and the borough and the community of Waylville, let's consider how good of a project it is for our community. They talked about the noise level. When you shut your door at night, you hear nothing. When you're back on your porch, you hear nothing in that area. I don't want to hear refrigerators running 24/7. I live a half a mile from, not quite a half a mile, from the proposed area. Lucy Cross is a one-mile stretch of road. I live at the half-mile point, so maybe a quarter mile from this proposed area. I can hear people speaking, you know, it travels. You can hear voices, I can hear voices and people speaking that half mile away, a dog barking. I certainly wouldn't want to hear as many refrigerators or air conditioning units running as what's going to impact the sound, what's going to produce the sound from that farm. And I thank you for your time, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Tim Daniel. I live at 3895 Adam Swamp Road, and I'm here on behalf of Great Fork Baptist Church, which is at 180180 Great Fork Road, right across from this. We are not opposed to the project per se, but we are opposed to three aspects of this project. First of all, as our neighbors have said, is the haul road conditions. Our parsonage is located directly beside Lucy Cross Road. Lucy Cross Road is a dirt and gravel road, mostly dirt. Every time somebody comes down there, it's a dirt cloud that follows them. Our parsonage is unprotected. We have the garage, everything. We request that if this is approved, that the city require that portion of Lucy Cross Road to be paved, just that portion up to their access. The other thing is, there's been a lot of talk about how much noise these make. We went up to a, to the solar farm on 460 today and stood beside one of those inverters that sounds like a washing machine. And just so you know... That's from over 50 feet away. Stood outside the barrier fence and recorded that. So we would ask that they move the switchgear an additional 100 feet down the road away from the parsonage, so it doesn't interfere with the quiet use of the parsonage in the backyard. The other thing is, if you go to any of these solar farms around here, you'll see overhead lines. You can see in the plans where they have an easement that both, or an overhead line that goes right on the board of our cemetery. These are two pictures of what those overhead lines look like. Can you see them from there? Would you like a closer view of them? Can I hand them to you?
Mr. Zale, can you take those and deliver them to us?
These lines would be visible as soon as you exit the church. They would also be prominent right across the board of our cemetery. We would ask if this project is approved, that those lines be placed underground. Be placed underground, they can come up and reemerge in the buffer zone. Great Fork has been there since 1833. We have people buried in that cemetery from the Civil War on. And that's the last thing more, and is a big industrial picture of high-tension power lines going across there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. At this time, this is the 15 minutes allotted for opposition. Are there any other speakers who would like to speak in opposition, if allowed? Raise your hand, please. Any other speakers that, if allowed? Let me see, I see one, two, three, four hands, I think. All right, thank you for that. Let me turn to the Planning Commission. I do believe in times past, when we had excess speakers, that there was consideration amended into our public hearing. So before we conclude, the opponents, let me turn to the Commissioners to see, and let me turn to Council. Am I in compliance with parliamentary procedure to consider allowing additional time for the four designated speakers?
Additional time can be added, but equal time needs to be given to proponents.
Repeat that, please.
If you add additional time for opponents, you need to add equal time for the proponents.
Thank you for that clarification. It needs to be equally allotted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. With that said, Planning Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the time for 10 minutes, and the four components will use 10 minutes total between the four of you and not repeat the same thing, so we can expedite the time.
We allow a total of 10 minutes, additional time for the opponents, which means, according to Council, the lawyer, that we also allow proponents 10 minutes. Motion?
Motion both ways.
Motion from Board Member Singleton. Do I hear a second? Second from Board Member Hicks. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Thank you for that. We'll continue for 10 minutes, a total of 10 minutes for the opponents. Who would like to speak next?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Councilmembers. My name's Greg Buckaloo. I live at 265 Great Fork Road, and I kind of did it the same folks people had. Obviously, they mentioned the noise associated with these, and it will stop at the fence, and I find it hard to believe that. Noise knows where the fence line is, and it's going to stop at that fence line. I know they realize the same thing. They say it won't affect the home value of our property, but I'm pretty sure anybody that moves the country, moves the country for a reason, they do not want the noise or the visual effects of a solar array in their backyard. Thirdly, and I listened to the previous two meetings here, and they're all about adding more houses and apartments building to the city of Suffolk. So it makes me wonder, you know, where our green space is going to be, and if we can keep and maintain the green space that we have, we need to consider maintaining what green space we have to accommodate the flora and fauna of Waylville and Virginia and whole. I'll just close, the final saying, you know, we all drove past the 460 solar array and know what they look like, and to me, the precedent has been set as to what they look like, and I don't think anybody would want that kind of array in their backyard. And I'll just close with the follow-up with the previous gentleman's noise recording. This is the noise recording of our backyard currently. Let's see if it'll play. It'll play for me, but it won't. I'll yield my time to somebody else. All right, it won't play, so I will yield my time back to somebody else. That was taken April 10th, 7:00 AM in the morning. Spring peepers and frogs in the backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon again. My name is Kelly Hingler. I'm actually from out in Eclipse, 9345 Eclipse Drive, and I'm also a healthcare provider. I also grew up in Myrtle, and I know many people out in Waylville. I play baseball in Waylville, and I was asked to come to speak before you as a healthcare advocate as well. I'm a physician assistant. This shift in noise decibels in a constant, no matter what the solar project states to you, has detrimental effect. No one should be exposed to something that's a continuous noise that they're not accustomed to and is above and beyond the level of what you get in rural farm fields. This close up behind a home with children, six months of construction, also not acceptable impact under the Charter of the City of Suffolk for Quality of Life impacts. I did hear that this was 600 linear feet from Waylville. Again, I love Waylville. I love all of our small communities, and 600 linear feet when we're in the mass growth transition that we are here, along the only line of houses on Great Fork Road, also I'd ask for consideration. Next, for public health means also community, which means these folks, I do advocate for the commission's consideration, please, that we have their opportunity for them to actually meet with the solar company, if they so wish, before deeming an opinion. I know that you must move things forward to City Council. I'm not a legislator. So I come to you with these considering facts, that there are children in that row of homes, those homeowners bought and chose and have chosen to stay sustainably in Suffolk, in that type of marketplace. We have more homes coming, more good things coming to Waylville as it develops, and clearly, from everyone that I have spoken, not only on Great Fork Road, but beyond, who live in the area and have grandparents in the area, that I have been asked to come forward for, have asked me to please advocate to you the health effects, have a little bit more research in this exact positioning. I understand the zoning is agricultural, while all of Suffolk has been agricultural since the Virginia colony. And that I will leave with you, with great pride in our heritage and love for community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Leonard Jones. I live at 500 Rooks Road in Gates County. But I am a member of Great Fork Baptist Church, have been a member for a long time. I am not as smart as some of these people that have spoken, but I am speaking from my heart. I think by listening to people that I want to put up this solar farm, they are probably smart people, and they think what they are doing is going to be good. But by listening to the other people talk, and by being a member of that area for 70 years, until I moved to Gates County, I would hate to see a facility such as this go in that community. I know I cannot vote, but I ask this commission to look in your heart and pray about this thing fervently before you make a decision, because the decision that you gentlemen make and lady is going to affect the Waylville community for a long, long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Hello, Troy Jean, 6625 Creighton Road, Suffolk, Virginia. I just wanted to speak on behalf of these folks that lease a ton of land over Eastern Shore around all these solar panels that have been put over there for the last 10 years. They've been very detrimental to the home values. There's tons of empty homes over there. There are not any buffers. They claim a buffer. The buffer's grass, you can ride by any solar field here or anywhere else, and there's no buffer. The lights at night are terrible. The predator sanctuaries, the predators get in there. They prey on all the animals and stuff that live around, and the homes, the people's pets and everything, and there's nothing good about them. They said that they would pay the taxes and all, and a lot of the landowners found that they didn't have their taxes paid this year and all when it come time. The noise, the trucks, the lights at night coming on all the time with any type of movement and everything. It's a, they've got a real argument here, and it really needs to be looked at hard because it is detrimental to an area. They can claim the buffers, they can claim the trees, they can claim what they want, but it's very detrimental to an area, and I don't think any, that it been around would want to live around them. Thank you for your time. You have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
My name is, my name is LaShelle Smith, and I reside at 235 Great Fork Road. I've been out there for about five years, and the reason why I moved out there is because I got tired of the urban, and I couldn't stand it. So the reason why I moved out there is before, it was originally, excuse me, it was originally for my kids, a safe place to live. My mom came from North Carolina. I loved it there, and as soon as I could, I took my kids, my husband, and we moved to Suffolk. My kids don't live with me anymore, they're grown, but my grandson comes out there to visit. He's seen things out there he's never seen before. I mean, the wildlife out there is just amazing. I love it. If they put these solar panels out there, I don't know what that is, but my view from my backyard is what I came out there for. And they're going to put those out there, and that's going to be gone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the designated 10 minutes, and I do believe that everyone who expressed an interest in speaking did. Was there anyone who wanted to speak and did not? I believe we recognize everybody who did. All right, at this time now, for the proponents, instead of having five minutes for rebuttal, and let me get a nod from the attorney, I believe you have 15 minutes.
That's correct.
And that's the nod he gave me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman. It is surprising, as people in the community were talking, I could not help but agree with their concerns. Their concerns are reasonable. Anybody that has seen the bad example that the solar farm in 460 has set up, and I learned now in Eastern Shore, is very reasonable to have those concerns. My client has embraced those fears and has addressed them, and in a moment, I'm going to ask the engineering, the engineer, Ms. Anderson, to address that specifically. I just want to make a couple of very, very brief points. Right now, that place is being farmed. It's agricultural, and we have a competing issue. Are we going to have some solar panels, or are we going to have agriculture? The agriculture brings dust, noise, and chemicals. If we were to look at that, we would have a bunch of comments about the dust, noise, and chemicals. We're looking at competing uses for this land. We believe that this applicant, with the measures they have taken, is going to be a particularly good neighbor. Certainly, a better neighbor in terms of chemicals, in terms of dust, and in terms of machinery noise, that would... noise, that would be a farm. One of the speakers mentioned that there was short time before the meeting was announced. That speaker is absolutely correct. We will have another meeting that we're going to set up. This has been a bit of a short fuse for us. So with all apologies, we're going to set up another community meeting for feedback. And we will include the, and as I think we have on the last one, the capacity to assist by conference, phone, or Zoom, being that these are the modern times we're living in. We're going to allow the people for the community meeting to assist by telephone or by a Zoom, by audiovisual means. That way, it's easier for people that are far away or have jobs they cannot let go of. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you.
You.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I know Mr. Doniger will come up here and add some additional comments in terms of the solar facility itself, but in terms of the site-specific concerns, I just wanted to do, address a couple of them. For starters, we do have a determination letter from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services saying that there will be no impact to any threatened or endangered species. I'll be happy to share that with anybody who has a concern of that. All stormwater management requirements, erosion cinema control requirements, will be provided on site. The stormwater management facilities are designed to, you know, reduce runoff, capture them, capture any, you know, 10-year flow, 100-year flow, whatever it's designed to, and then either be retained back into the ground or a slow release. So we'll be helping in that way. The vegetated areas, I know I've seen the solar facilities on 460 myself, and they don't really provide much, I agree, for a landscape buffer. These will be highly dense vegetated areas. The 2020 revision per the Applied Code requires a 50-foot buffer along residential, which we have provided, and a 15-foot elsewhere, and we have provided a 25-foot along Lucy Cross Road to exceed that, exceed that limit. Any hall road concerns, you know, we're willing to work with the community and come to an agreement. Any regulations or concerns of that nature, you know, we're willing to, you know, I know Mr. Doniger wants to be a good neighbor and comply with any community concerns, so we'll be happy to accommodate those. So, thank you.
You.
Thank you again, Mr. Commissioners and for the neighbors that have come out. I too will third the sentiment that the concerns are certainly warranted and reasonable. I also think that there's a few things that are different between our project and projects that have come in the past, particularly larger ones, and some information I'd just like to clarify to make sure that we have the right data. And so, not to belabor the noise particular piece, but that is obviously very much a consideration. And again, I mentioned earlier that we are using what we call string inverters, or what the industry calls string inverters. So very different from the inverters that are out there on 460, which are centralized, much larger units. So these are much smaller units, actually smaller than the actual unit that you would see, an air conditioning unit, for instance, on a house and spread throughout the project. So they're very, they're even further distant from the houses. To the point of the distance from the houses, we focused a lot on the 50-foot vegetative buffer. The actual closest a solar panel would be is about 150 feet from the closest house. So that is about half a football field away. Understand that in the country, half a football field is still very close, but I just want to make that differentiation, that solar panels would not be right next to the vegetative buffer, but then there'll be another 100 feet beyond that till you get to the first solar panel, excuse me. Let's see. So construction, construction of the smaller projects like this one probably take about three months, potentially even less than that if we go very efficiently. But they're much small, it's a much smaller project than probably others that folks are used to. And so there's, that's one of the differences that we'll work again to minimize that impact, the hall road considerations, but also having a laydown area so there's no trucks waiting, get the trucks right off the road, drop their equipment and leave. And so we'll minimize any traffic considerations during the construction period. One of the neighbors asked about benefits. So this project is designed to comply with the Virginia Clean Economy Act, which was passed about a year ago by the state legislature, which is designed to get Virginia into the 100% renewables by the year 2050. And so this project is one of those that are slated inside a category that the VCEA Act created of three megawatts or below projects. And so there are several benefits, starting from global benefits with respect to carbon, decarbonizing our society, statewide benefits as far as explained in the VCEA. And then, of course, for local community, as Dominion transitions its rate base over from fossil fuels to solar, which is now the lowest cost of energy, hopefully, myself being included, that yields benefits to all of us in our electricity bills in addition to cleaning up our environment. And so just wanted to highlight that. Two particular smaller points, but just factual pieces here. Defense will not be electrified, so just want to clear up any misunderstandings with that. There is no plan to put TVs in the project site, and there will be no lights that are on continuously. So the only lights would be available for maintenance by the transformers and only when needed. So will not disrupt the environment, trying to put as minimal impact into the environment as compared to what we have today. Maybe just let me, oh, the Baptist Church, Great Fork Baptist Church, mentioned about the lines around the cemetery. And so we're absolutely able to put those underground to the extent that Dominion works with us as far as the interconnection, which those conversations are ongoing. But again, to have as minimal impact to the sightlines as exists today. So very much look forward to continue the conversation and to your deliberations. Thank you.
You. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to address the commissioners and the audience. This is not the end of the dialogue. If anybody wants to discuss things with us, be part of the project and see if you can influence the project, please give me a call. Again, my name is Martin Speroni. I will be outside with my contact information at the end of this meeting. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make any additional comments on behalf of this application? All right, we will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the last speaker before the attorney is named Dyer to come back to the podium and repeat what he said about that overhead line? But you may have to take off your mask because I simply could not understand what you were saying. Thank you so much.
Apologize, ma'am. My name is Mike Doniger, just for that. But as far as the line connecting from the project to Dominion Power, it's currently shown going along the eastern and the northern boundaries of Great Fork Baptist Church Cemetery. And so we're in discussions with Dominion on exactly that routing and where it ties in. It'll obviously have to go above ground to actually make the tie-in to the grid, but certainly can be underground up until that point and will continue to work in that direction.
Just a minute while you're at the podium. Let's see if any other commissioners have questions to this representative of the applicant while he's at the podium.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Doniger, power leaving this location, will it pass the cemetery? You have to go, you're saying it's going underground. Where does it come from underground? Is it on the other side of Lucy Cross Road? So you're saying it has to go under the road?
So the answer to that, sir, will be determined in conjunction with Dominion Power. Eventually, it has to tie into a line that is on Route 13. And so the discussion with Dominion Power, they have a right-of-way currently on the western side of the cemetery that runs along Great Fork Road. That line that's currently there is only a distribution line that's a lower voltage. So Dominion Power will either have to extend along their current right-of-way, or we have to get our power up to them. And so as that works through the Dominion Power planning and engineering cycle, those decisions will be made, but certainly if there's continued input, and we'll work with the church to minimize any considerations that we can, again, subject to Dominion Power's input as well.
So you're saying that Dominion Power will bring the source that you were going to connect to from Route 13 down to Lucy Cross Road?
So the wires have to connect, whether we build to them or they come partway to us is part of that discussion with their engineering team. So we have to bring the voltage off of Route 13 to the project, vice versa. Am I answering your questions, sir?
Yeah, it's still, it's hard to imagine because 13 is what, quarter mile away, at least?
Yes, sir. Just under a quarter mile to the intersection of Great Fork and Route 13.
Yeah. And where, where would your demarcation be on that location to tie into the grid?
What we've proposed to Dominion Power is that we will come to them, essentially. And so come to them meaning just adjacent to the intersection with Route 13 and Great Fork Road. So that's why you see, show our routing going on the eastern side and the northern side of the church, of the, I'm sorry, of the cemetery, which, again, can absolutely be underground if that continues to be the routing that Dominion asks us to take.
It's too vague to try to imagine when you're leaving this location, going around the cemetery, going up to 13. And again, you say it's going to be done with engineering and Dominion Power, so at this point, we can't say where the cables will be.
Yes, there's two options. I'm sorry, I'm not being clear. And the chart we're looking at here, it's just to the north. You can just see on the northwest corner, if you will, on the north side of Lucy Cross Road, we have to either come up the eastern side of the cemetery or go along Dominion's existing right-of-way. That's along Great Fork Road on the west side of the cemetery. So those are the two options to get from the project site to Route 13. I'm not sure if that, that was helpful, that was visual.
Well, actually, the very top where the green, going west from the point at the right, that corner across from the church, that section there that's square, that's the cemetery.
Yes, sir. Yep, the most top-left corner of the green, like you said, just on the other side of Lucy Cross Road, that's the cemetery. Between the cemetery and Route 13 is maybe .2 of a mile. There are no houses there. That's all part of the same parcel that we're talking about now that's on our side.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just a minute while you're at the podium. Let's see if any other commissioners have questions to you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Again, we've had the public hearing. We're back to the commissioners with questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, hello, way over here, South District here. Can, Ms. Anderson, can you come back to the podium, please? I need a little bit of education.
Sure.
Can you help me with what the string inverters are and do they run 24 hours a day? And then if they are the source of the noise, is there any way that they can be, I don't know, domed, captured? I mean, I realize they probably would need some ventilation, you know, because you don't want them to overheat. But I mean, is there any way to basically sort of muff them? Because collectively, they probably would make a decent amount of noise out in the country at night.
So I'm actually the site civil engineer. I actually will turn to Mike Doniger as the electrical expert on the job.
Excuse me.
So, Mike, thank you.
Sir, I haven't, to answer your question about kind of protecting in the, shielding the string inverters, I haven't seen a site do that, but it's certainly something we can explore to see if we can put some kind of sound barrier that would help, but that's something I'll have to look into.
Do they run, do they run 24 hours a day?
Yes, sir, they do. Converting the, well, that actually, no, that's actually not true. They're connected 24 hours a day, but obviously they only, they only run when the sun is shining. So
Oh, at night, they would not be running?
At night, they're not doing, they're not making any noise at night.
They're not making any noise?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then, you know, one of the things that sort of strikes me, and I'm sure there's probably a very good reason for it, is you have all that land on the other side of the road that doesn't appear to be anywhere, I mean, there might be, you know, one or two residents, but back in the corner of that, it looks like it's, you know, a lot more isolated than what you are. I mean, it's almost like you bought the land and said, where can we put this that's going to inconvenience the most number of people? And then, I don't mean to be sarcastic about it, but, you know, on the other side of the road, it looks like it's a whole lot, whole lot more vacant.
Sir, we actually had the exact same impression when we first looked at the site. And from several of the perspectives, there's a lot better choice of moving it north of Lucy Cross Road. However, we do have some concerns with respect to the water table and the wetlands considerations on that side of the road. It's something that we're continuing to analyze to see if that could be used. But right now, that's the reason why we chose to move forward with this project, this project on the south side because of the water consideration.
And, Mr. Chairman, I guess my only other question to you while you're at the podium would be, since y'all have offered, you know, if you will, an olive branch to the neighbors to meet with them some more and discuss and get some more of their input into the project, would you be amenable to us tabling it to give you an opportunity to meet with those residents and see if maybe some of these concerns can be ironed out and, you know, perhaps even mitigated?
That's, yes, we would be happy to continue to have the dialogue with the neighbors that I mentioned. We, you know, went door-to-door, if you will, several months ago, and were caught a bit flat-footed with the date of this hearing. And so apologize again for the short notice on the community hearing for, or community meeting that we tried to implement last week. Be happy to continue the conversation with the neighbors over the coming month or so and provide that input to the extent that you get, that that's the will of the council.
I'm willing to make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, but I want to give all the other commissioners an opportunity to have any questions that they may have addressed before I do make that motion.
Hold that just a second. And while this gentleman is at the podium, let me see if there are other questions from commissioners to this gentleman. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, again, we've had the public hearing. We're back to the commissioners with questions, comments, and possibly a motion. So, Mr. Richter, this could be your moment of opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That being the case, I would like to make a motion that this be tabled for 60 days, or 30 days at the minimum, obviously, because that's when we meet again, to give the applicants an opportunity to meet with the residents and, you know, see what, if anything can be worked out.
Which is your motion, 30 days?
Well, I'll start with 30 days. I see Ms. Hicks over there shaking her head at my 60 days again, so I'll do 30.
Okay, I need to be clear. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Richter that this issue be tabled for 30 days to allow the applicant to meet with the neighbors to see if further questions can be resolved and answered. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? A second from Commissioner Singleton. Motion and second to, to table this for 30 days. Motion and second, discussion of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. I guess this is city staff. During those, before it comes back, does the applicant have the opportunity to amend any of the conditions or anything in their application after they talk to the community?
The conditions are suggested conditions by staff. They're, they're not proffers, they're not presented by the applicant. They can certainly present to us for consideration to add to the conditional use permit, but we're providing you with suggested conditions that would make this project appropriate in this particular location. And so the commission then could delete or add conditions, and then as well as the decision-maker, City Council, can add or delete conditions as, as they see fit.
As well as the applicant, make sure I understand. The applicant could add the conditions?
The applicant certainly could.
If they choose to.
Make a suggestion to the commission or staff that a condition be, be attached.
Thank you.
Motion and second to table this for 30 days, discussion of the motion. Before I call for the question, I'm going to vote against the motion. And my reason for that is, is because of the number of issues that have been presented here today, from my perspective, delay is not going to answer those. Mr. Gumas, call for the vote, please.
Chairman Benton?
No.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
No.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
No.
Motion passes by a vote of five to three.
Right, congratulations on that. There has been a motion approved for tabling for 30 days. All right, thank you for that. Our next public hearing this afternoon is conditional use permit request CUP 2021-005 Borrego-Hosier Road Solar Facility. Mr. Gumas, if you'll present the caption, please.
Conditional use permit request CUP 2021-005 Borrego-Hosier Road Solar Facility, submitted by Alexander Dusen, P.E., Hosier Road Solar 1, LLC, care of Borrego Solar Systems Incorporated. Applicants, on behalf of Patrick Fancy, Fancy Corporation, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located on the west side of Hosier Road, zoning map 44, parcel 125. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress voting borough, zoned M2, heavy industrial zoning district. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request CUP 2021-005. Mr. Chairman, Julie Swan will present the staff presentation.
Right, Ms. Swan, before I acknowledge you, I turn to Ms. Brazil. Is there anyone outside that would like to be in the chambers for this public hearing?
There's no one in the lobby.
Thank you for that. I now recognize Ms. Swan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. A complete narrative was provided prior to this meeting. As it came to my attention, that a few sentences were missing, and so you'd see page two. This narrative has been placed at your seats. So this is a conditional use permit to establish a 3-megawatt solar facility on property located at Hosier Road. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. The subject property is approximately 62 acres, and the proposed use of the solar energy facility will occupy approximately 15.9 acres. The subject property is zoned M2. Solar facilities are allowed with an approved conditional use permit in the M2 zoning district. Surrounding the subject property on the northwest and south is M2, and the agricultural zoning district is to the east. The applicant is proposing a 3-megawatt solar facility. The proposal calls for arrays that will be a maximum of 15 feet in height. Plans also call for a seven-foot chain-link fence, a 50-foot setback from all property lines, and an existing 15-foot wide vegetative buffer in accordance with Section 31-724 of the UDO. The proposal also includes stormwater to be treated on-site, utilizing a best management practice or BMP, which will be reviewed at time of site plan review. Public Works Engineering will require a stormwater management facility maintenance agreement to be recorded prior to approval of a site plan. A decommissioning plan was also submitted as part of this application in accordance with Section 31-724 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Staff has evaluated the proposed use in relation to Sections 31-306, conditional use permits, and Section 31-724, supplemental standards of solar energy facilities. The applicant will be required to observe a 50-foot setback from the use and all property lines, and a 15-foot landscaped buffer between the solar energy facility and adjacent uses through the installation of screening and landscaping in accordance with Sections 31-603 and 31-724. The applicant and the Department of Public Works Traffic Division have identified and conditioned a haul route for construction traffic, which will be from the south via Carolina Road to Airport Road to Meadow Country Road to Hosier Road, which is a recommended condition five in the attached resolution and ordinance. In summary, the development of a solar energy facility on the site should have minimal impacts on the surrounding area. The project will have to comply with the development standards of the Unified Development Ordinance, including supplemental use regulations for solar energy facilities as stipulated in Sections 31-724. Additionally, the installation of landscaping will be required in accordance with Section 31-603F and 31-412G of the UDO. Staff has closely reviewed the request to determine its compatibility with the criteria outlined in Section 31-306 as it pertains to requested conditional use permits. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2021-005 with the conditions as noted in the attached resolution and ordinance. I am happy to answer any questions you may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swan. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Come forward, please.
Good afternoon, thank you for your time. My name is Jessie Robinson, and I'm the project developer for Borrego Solar. Borrego Solar is a family-founded commercial solar development, development company that was founded in the 1980s, and we've been around for 40 years. We've developed over 750 megawatts of solar in several states, including New York, Massachusetts, Illinois, and California. We are now here today because of the Virginia Clean Economy Act that was passed last April, and it calls for Dominion Energy to acquire over 1,000 megawatts of solar by 2035. So the project we're proposing to you all today is Hosier Road. It is a 3-megawatt AC project, and there's a lot that goes into choosing a site for solar. And this site, we chose primarily because of its location, being in the rural agricultural area of your comprehensive zone, as mentioned, and in the heavy industrial zone. It's also located east of the Suffolk Executive Airport, and has minimal neighbors surrounding the property, minimal visibility of the system if it were to be built. We held a virtual community meeting on March 15th for adjacent neighbors. We sent several mailers, we sent two mailers over one month in advance of the meeting, letting them know about the project and details to join that meeting. We had one attendee, and their main questions were, what is the noise generated from the system? And they also, by the end of the presentation, wanted solar on their property as well. So if this project were to be built, we estimate it to create about 30 to 40 temporary construction jobs, and one to three long-term local jobs for operations and maintenance. So I'll turn it over to our civil engineer to add to our presentation, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Alex Duzon, I'm the civil engineer for the project. I represent Borrego Solar, and I am the applicant for this particular project. I believe many of you here may have been with me late last year when I was here for a different project in a different location of the city. I'm here today, as Jessie mentioned, for, with a project that is in a generally, and I appreciate staff's report, speaking to this, it's in a generally industrial area of the city, it's well-screened from all neighbors. You can see from our site plan up there, that's not for lack of survey surrounding the parcel, there are no houses within the view frame of that sheet you're looking at in front of you. As mentioned, we are to the west of the road. Where our parcel is bisected by the transmission line, that's incidental. We connect to the distribution line at the road. Jessie mentioned that when citing these projects, we're not throwing a dart at the map. There are specific criteria that we have to meet to comply with the law and what Dominion has required for a project like this to look like. So, any questions, I'll stand by to answer, but appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Not is anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Not would you like to make any additional comments on behalf of this application? If not, we will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question of Mrs. Swan. Um, on page four of the presentation, and maybe you can put up, back up, the picture that shows this in location to the airport. I think it was the first one, that one right there, which shows the airport to the left, right directly to the left of this. I'm, I'm sorry, I think Tim was here from the, from the Airport Authority. It'd been a good one, good chance to ask him. Make sure that this has no impact on the airport from the glare, et cetera. The last presentation, there was some comment about glare, and it doesn't look like it's, it's, uh, the main runway would, would have any impact on that. But is that something that y'all check with the airport manager on to be sure that they have no problem with this?
And I don't believe in this case we did. There is a project very near this one.
Across the road, though, I believe.
Across the road, which is a much larger one. It's the one that came back before you all last month.
Right.
We did at that time of that original consideration for that CUP reach-out to Tim, and they stated no concerns with the location of the airport. The, there are supplemental use standards for these to be located outside of what's determined to be an airport control zone.
Right.
And what that's been determined is the cone of arrival and departure at the end of the runway. It's my understanding that there's one functioning runway at this point at the airport, and this would not be located within that area.
Yeah, it looks like it's, it's to the south of it. Okay, yeah, that, that was just my only concern. Um, that's all. I'm done.
Just a minute, both of you, if you will, linger at the podium, and let's see if there are any other questions from commissioners while you're at the podium. Thank you both. Again, we've had the public hearing. We're back to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval of CUP 2021-005 with the conditions.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Rector with conditions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From, it must be Eberwine, would remember Eberwine. All right, motion and second for approval. Discussion of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add that this one coming, following the, the last one that we had on the agenda, and I would, I would have to say that Ms. Robinson, I believe, made the comment that it was chosen for location. And location, 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 when you're dealing with real estate, is critical in anything. And I think from looking at this one, other than the little concern for the airport, if there is a good location and a bad location, this is definitely a good location compared to the one that we heard before. So I won't have any problem with supporting this.
Thank you. Again, we have a motion and a second for approval, discussion of the motion. Mr. Gumas, call for the vote, please.
Chairman Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
And we'll go to City Council on May 19 with a recommenda, with a recommendation for approval. Thank you, all right? And Mr. Rector, I did endorse your, uh, motion at that point. And Mr. Staler, I agreed with the comments that you made about this application of a solar facility versus the last one, didn't have the controversy attached to it. All right, now, I'm not aware of, that concludes our public hearings for this afternoon. That concludes our public hearings. I'm not aware of any old business under new business. I turn to Mr. Gumas for a status report of the City Council meeting and preliminary Platts, which there were none, but I turn to Mr. Gumas.
Yes, sir, as you indicated, with regards to preliminary Platts, none have been approved since the last meeting of the commission. There were two items that this body heard and that City Council heard on March, at their, March 17th meeting. The first was conditional use permit request CUP 2020-026. This was Constance North Park. As you recall, this was to develop a, a park there at the, along the river. This was approved with the conditions. The second was ordinance text amendment OTA 2021-001. This was to amend Chapter 7 supplemental use regulations in regard to solar energy facilities. Specifically, we added some increased language with regards to buffering and landscaping. That, too, was approved by City Council at the March 17th meeting.
Anything else, Mr. Gumas?
No, sir, that completes my report.
Thank you for that. I turn to the commissioners. Any comments or matters from the commissioners at this time?
Mr. Chairman, once again, from the south end over here. One of the things that we heard today that I, I think is, should be a little bit of, not, not necessarily an alarm bell to us, but it certainly should have gotten our attention. He said that that act that was passed by the governor in April of this year is looking for 1,000 megawatts of power to be generated in Virginia by 2035. The application that we had before us today that stirred the pot so vigorously was only three. That means 333 times what we saw today is going to need to be generated and put on the grid, which kind of begs the question a little bit, since this is, you know, basically an infant to us that was born. this is, you know, basically an infant to us that was born last year, and we have just slowly started to generate the ordinances and the controls around this, as this infant grows into young adulthood, which is going to happen very fast, because 2035 is not that far away. Do we need to revisit this in terms of, from an ordinance perspective? In terms of how close to a residence they need to be, perhaps the buffers, perhaps the noise? You know, and I throw that out there, because what we saw demonstrated today, as Mr. Staler so correctly pointed out, you know, location, location, location. We had two virtually identical applications. One of them stirred up a hornet's nest, and the other one literally had nobody here to speak in opposition to it. You know, so clearly, you know, that was a factor. And so I'm just going to throw that out there. I think this is going to be something that we are going to see on our plate for a while. So I just want to make sure that the city is prepared, you know, to deal with it, and because I'm not a huge fan of these solar farms, and I think there's better ways maybe to generate renewable energy, but I'm not an engineer, I'm not a legislator, and I'm certainly not a developer. And, you know, perhaps other things will come along that will assist in the renewable energy field, but, you know, I just, I don't want the city to be blindsided and end up with a bunch of stuff, because the people that put the solar energy facility out there on 460 set a very, very raw precedent for other projects to come down the road. And I know people personally that live near that facility that were affected and have moved, or have put their house on the market to sell, to move, because of how poorly that thing was put together, and then how unresponsive the people that were running the facility were to their concerns. So, like I say, it's something we're going to see a lot of, and I just want the city to be prepared.
Well, I think, if I may respond, I think Mr. Gumas has expressed maybe that there is a need for further consideration of fine-tuning what goes with the application. And with that, let me hesitate, I'm not speaking for him on behalf of the city, but would you like to respond to what he has said, following what we have experienced today?
Well, certainly, we need to be conscious and sensitive as we move forward to the various issues and the need for making modifications to our requirements. I will point out that we are, and I say that as a preference or a preface to our, the next comments, that we are in the process of preparing to update the comprehensive plan, and one of the elements that we certainly recognize need to be addressed are solar energy facilities to address policy decisions, and then to implement the appropriate regulations that address the various issues with regards to solar facilities. That could include, you know, proximity to residential uses, locations where we allow them. Do we want to have them congregated in districts, or do we want, would we prefer to have them spread out? All of these types of issues, you know, need to be addressed both by the local government and certainly with community input with regards to these facilities. They are coming down the pike, most, and I'm not an expert on the Virginia Clean Energy Act, but again, those, I think, are encouraging the smaller facilities that we are experiencing. We have not been experiencing the mega-size facilities, not to say that they couldn't be coming, but this is certainly something that we need to be conscious of. We anticipate including it in the comprehensive plan, but again, we also need to be sensitive to the timing of that, and whether we need to make modifications until that project's completed.
Something that I might add, and I think we experienced it today, it's a privilege for each of us to be allowed to come to the table in this capacity to represent the city and our fellow citizens. It's a privilege for each one of us. And we need to recognize that when we have public hearings, it's a public hearing in the sense that we are being informed, and each one of us are challenged to make a call based on what we think is in the best interest of our citizens in our city. And sometimes, it's not easy to say no, but necessary. I don't know whether it was right or wrong for my response to your motion as to how I was going to vote, but I wanted to articulate that before the vote rather than after the fact. Because through my eyes, what I saw, and my acquaintance, those people are not going to be made pleased in the next thirty, or sixty, or ninety days, in my opinion, in my opinion. And there comes a moment in time that we have to respond to that. People who are seeking out, and this alternative energy, it's coming, there's no doubt about it, there's a need for it. At the same time, we saw a very definite diversity or contradiction. Well, one site, no problem. Another site, as you said, stirred up a hornet's nest. And no matter what the administration or staff does, I think as these issues come before us for conditional use permits, that we as representatives or as planning commissioners are going to have to vote how we see it, and what's in the best interest of those we serve.
Mr. Chairman, let me start my next comment by saying, I have a great deal of respect for your opinion, and always have. I think as a chairman, I think the city is well-served by having you with your experience sitting in that chair. My primary reason for tabling, and I agree with you, that there may not be any consensus at all of opinion when they get through with it, but I just felt like there needed to be an opportunity for the applicant and the neighbors to get together so that the air can be cleared completely, and if there is no changing of anybody's hearts or minds, then at least the dialogue has been had. And then when we come back to it, if the people come back with the same complaints that have not been resolved, then as you pointed out, then we need to look within ourselves, and sometimes the answer is no.
The right thing has been done this afternoon, make no mistake, the motion, the response to it. But I think that it's good, and can be healthy, that there can be diversity of perspectives among us. And I think that those we serve need to occasionally recognize that we do occasionally have diverse thinking, and it's for a reason, it's for a reason. Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments from the commissioners this afternoon? It's been a good meeting. It's been a good meeting that has served a lot of purpose for our citizens, as well as the applicants. And we've got to commend those who are trying to bring this alternative energy forward, that they are reaching out to see what they can do and where they can make it work. All right, I'm not aware of any other matters of business this afternoon. Thank you for your participation, and we are now adjourned.